I now call this meeting back to order. We will start with item 4.0, the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by Aaron Bernardino from Edward Kimball Elementary School. Aaron, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, he can stay here. No, stay here. We have to say nice things about you. Goal-oriented, responsible, hard-working, and dedicated are just some of the attributes used to describe Aaron Bernardino. He has excelled in goal-setting at such a young age to where he has mastered the art of planning before each school semester what he wants his academic year to look like. It is no wonder why he is so efficient in accomplishing his goals. Aaron, a student enrolled in the dual-merger program at Edward Kimball Elementary School, earned a perfect score in both of the California Standards Test and Spanish Standards Test in Language Arts and Math Exams. That is a total of four tests, all with a perfect score of 600. This is an amazing accomplishment for the Edward Kimball Elementary third grader. His family, teachers, and friends are overjoyed, and so are we. As a bilingual student, Aaron has been a huge role model and leader by tutoring his peers in both Spanish and English in the subjects of math and language arts. He is an extremely hard worker and is always willing and eager to do more than what is asked of him. He is a true role model of both character and academic achievement at Edward Kimball Elementary School, says his second-grade teacher, Juanita Herrera. This hard work and dedication is evident in Aaron's school track record. Last school year, Aaron was neither absent nor tardy one day of school, and he did not miss one homework assignment. Is that true?
Yes.
Wow. Aaron is reflective of his work on a daily basis. He keeps in mind what his school data notebook says and creates a specific action plan to meet his academic goals and is always thriving to reach the next level. He knows exactly what he is doing and what he wants to accomplish. He has mentioned his desire to become either an astronaut or a doctor when he grows up. Ms. Herrera also stated Aaron is a happy scholar who enjoys learning. For these reasons and more, the Sacramento City Unified School District would like to honor Aaron Bernardino at this board meeting's stellar, as this board meeting's stellar student. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you Superintendent Raymond and Board members of Sacramento City Unified School District for this special recognition. This award means very much to me. I'd also like to thank Mrs. Herrera for teaching me how to be the best student I can be. También me gustaría darle las gracias a mi mamá y papá por apoyarme toda mi vida. Los quiero mucho a los dos. I am so proud to be bilingual and have gotten four perfect scores on my CST and STS, two in English and two in Spanish. I received these perfect scores by always paying attention and working hard. If you put your mind on something, you can accomplish it. By learning in two languages and trying my best on the test, I showed the importance of my education. Thank you for coming and listening. A special thank you as well from my amazing principal, Dr. Henry. I hope that you all have a good evening. Si se puede, yes you can.
Thank you very much. Thank you, seeing many familiar faces. Y gracias a los padres de Aaron. Gracias por traerlo ahora y para nosotros, para participar en este momento. Gracias. So with that, we're going to move forward on to the next agenda item. So item 5.0, Announcement of Action Taken in Closed Session.
None, Madam President.
Thank you. Item 6.0, Agenda Adoption. Vice President Wu.
Madam President, my understanding is that the Superintendent would like to remove 10.2 from the agenda, and with that amendment, I would move the agenda.
I have a second. I have a second by Member Kennedy. All in favor for the agenda to be adopted without the item 10.2, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, and objections, I mean abstentions, the ayes have it. We have an agenda. Item 7.0, Public Comment. Mr. Gabe Ross.
We have one comment on 7.0 from Mr. Ralph Merletti.
Before we take that comment, let me read a statement, please. This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cablecast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the government affairs channel on the Comcast and Shore West Cable Systems. Today's meeting will be replayed Saturday, October 6th at 10:00 p.m. and Monday, October 8th at noon on Channel 14, and will be webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. A video copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board should fill out a speaker identification form located in the back of the community room and give it to the Chief Communications Officer prior to the conclusion of the item's presentation, and that's Mr. Gabe Ross. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items not listed on the agenda. If you're found to be commenting on an item that is on the agenda, you'll be asked to defer until your item comes up on the agenda. Please turn off all cell phones and place them on silent or vibrate. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. I'm Ralph Merletti from Fruit Ridge area. And two topics real quickly. The first one, last time there was discussion about the resolution for against Proposition 32 because it would put too many, you felt it would put too many restrictions on the unions. I had commented on that, but I also wanted to comment that the unions, the teachers' union, one of them anyway, has not supported parental initiatives, that is, dealing with parental notices if their daughter is going to get an abortion or so from school or someplace and so forth. And I just feel that the unions are not family-friendly in that regard, and that's my comment I would like to make on that. And then, in the opposite direction, I would like to compliment the Sacramento City Unified School District for its really great coverage of the Space Shuttle flyover late last month. I was at the State Capitol and got my pictures, and so I was able to compare what I had with what they had, and set to beautiful classical music. It's really quite a masterpiece. So again, I compliment the SCUSD for that fine display of Space Shuttle flyover pictures from the various schools within the district. Thank you.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Lynn Booker, and I want to address the board in regards to my daughter, Tabitha Watts Booker, who's in the audience. I've written all of you several emails regarding her bullying, how she had to be put in the hospital because she is suicidal from bullying that has not been addressed, some of it from teachers, and I never had a response except for from Mrs. Rodriguez. That is my daughter back there. I want to put a face with these emails so you can see she's not just a file to me. I care about her. She is a good student. I have all her report cards till second grade, all good comments, excellent grades, well-liked, and for the life of me, I can't understand why you don't want to protect her. I send my children to school, teaching them respect for staff members, to work hard and do what they're supposed to, and I can't get a response from any of you. You started a new bullying program? That's excellent, but the bullying also has to address teachers who bully students, not just students. There is a problem with teachers, and all of you seem to hide behind their union. You don't address it. I've talked to administrators out here who are decent to us. They know we're decent people. I've had administrators, not necessarily these ones, tell me that they have problems because the union, they can't talk to teachers and do that. Something needs to change. My daughter is missing the best part of her school year because she's in the hospital. She's dealing with PTSD. She was bullied on the internet. I gave you guys copies of everything. I gave your school resource officers copies of everything. Nothing was done, and we're here now, and I am angry. Her education is too important, and I'm not going to let it go. You may not want to do something, but I am going to do something, and I would appreciate it if I could get some help. I'm not trying to be a pain. This has caused us expenditures that we don't have the money for. I am out of work. I'm a divorced mother of six. This was not our fault. All I'm asking is for you to address those teachers, make it clear that they are role models, that they have to act in a certain demeanor, and help me help my daughter. McClatchy and Theodore Judah has been very helpful. The teachers have been very caring. This mainly comes from Washington Elementary, the abuse that has carried on. Thank you.
No further public comment, thank you. Item 8.0, Consent Agenda. And I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
First by Vice President Wu and a second by Vice President Cunio. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you. Item 9.0, Communications. 9.1, Employee Organization Report, CSA.
Good evening, members of the board, President Rodriguez and Superintendent Raymond. SCTA is concerned about the cleanliness of our schools and the inability to deal so far with that problem. We understand that there's a plan in place to rehire some custodians, and we support bringing back some of our brothers and sisters from SEIU 1021 in those positions. We also hope that this board will ask the district to make sure that those employees are paid properly and rehired in order of seniority. It's hard to read about the district spending a half a million dollar on city here when we are getting cited for health code violations, and our members and students are seeing cockroaches in the hallways. Then turning to something a little more positive. The SCTA Board voted to support the bond measures for both Q and R. We do support improving our facilities and making them first-class, and we believe that those bonds will do so. There are many things that need repair, and yes, we need to make sure that we are planning for our future. So we hope that in the future, not only will they cover that, but also that the buildings will be clean and inviting for parents and students that will be using them. Thank you.
UPE. Moving on to 9.2, District Parent Advisory Committees. Community Advisory Committee. District Advisory Council. School Site Councils. District English Learner Advisory Committee. Gifted and Talented Education Advisory Committee. Indian Education Parent Committee. Sacramento Council of Parent Teacher Association, PTA.
Good evening. September 6th, I wasn't here. It was the first week of school, and I was at John Cabrillo's Back to School Night, so Maria Rodriguez presented our council report. But while I was at Back to School Night, I spoke to parents about how decisions were made because they weren't present, things such as removal home-to-school transportation. And what resonated with them was how things that directly affected them, they didn't even know that the board meetings were where those decisions were made. And it was in that time that I realized that the work for us as a PTA, the work for you guys, board members, is not done in here. If you guys look behind me, this room is empty, 47,000 students and a handful of parents, a few administrators. We have better things to do with our time, and we have things that we should be doing with our time to engage our parents and our students. So for that reason, effective today, Sacramento Council PTA will forego our monthly report so that we can do the work out at our school sites, out in our communities to engage our parents, and we will continue to engage you guys to come to our events in the community for your constituents to do the same. And we look forward to still working with the district and the board as partners, but there's more work to be done than coming and sitting here just for show. Thank you, guys.
Item 9.3, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, President Rodriguez. I'm going to be brief this evening, but I just wanted to share with the board that earlier this week, when we had our first monthly principals' meeting, we talked a lot about our own work. This is, October is Anti-Bullying Month, and we talked with our administrators about the importance of moving through with this training that's coming up for all of our administrators, which will then move out into training all of our staff. And I shared with them my own personal experience, growing up as a middle-school student and having experienced the sting of bullying personally, and how that impacted me in my own experiences with school. I won't go into that here, but I did want to share with them that this is an expectation that we have for all of our students and for all of our staff here within the school district. I also talked to them about the importance of ensuring that our calendars of events are respectful for every ethnic group of our students and of all religious denominations. And I shared the experience about having been unable to go to my own schools, Back to School Night, because it was on the first night of Rosh Hashanah, the Jewish New Year, and that moving forward, we will be working together with multiple organizations to ensure that our calendar reflects and is respectful of all of our students and all of our staff and all of the observations that they have. It's absolutely critically important that we do this. I don't think that there are instances that it's done intentionally. I think it's done for lack of knowledge, and so we're going to ensure, as we hand out a calendar, that all of our events can be observed. And taking it a step further, I've also heard that there are times where we have policies where students, if they do not attend because of a religious observance, that they are recorded absent in school, thereby jeopardizing a perfect attendance mark. I've also heard instances where students are being penalized for not turning in homework or if they are absent from school because they are choosing to be observant, that they are being penalized for this, and this will no longer be tolerated. I've made it very clear to all of our staff and all of our administrators, and we're going to ensure that irrespective of how somebody chooses to worship, that this be respected, and that will be our practice as well as a policy of our district moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you for that enlightening report. And thank you for the religious considerations on the calendars. I appreciate that very much. 9.4 is the president's report. And I want to share with you that this week I attended Naleo's Eighth Annual National Summit on the State of Latino Education, which was held in Washington, D.C. During the summit, we received information on the progress toward the attainment of high school diplomas and college degrees of Latino students in the USA. The reason why I'm bringing this forward is that Sacramento City Unified School District's Latino student population is at 36%, which constitutes the largest minority population in our school district, and I believe it's worthy to share with you what I learned at the summit. In summary, Latinos across the nation have increased in both high school completion rates and college enrollment. In fact, 76.3% of Latino students in the nation completed a high school diploma or GED equivalent examination, and that includes late finishers as well. And the college enrollment, and this is just enrollment, not college completion, college enrollment of Latino students is at 16.3%, which coincidentally matches the number of Latinos in the population of the United States for the first time ever this number has been seen. These increases occurred in the past two to three years, and though it was not expressed by any of the presenters at the summit, it makes me wonder that this increase could be as a direct result of the Obama administration's focus on excellence in education initiative for Hispanics in the past three years, which I have been part of. Speaking of the federal priorities, I come with some not-so-good news. We learned some of the important and potentially severe impacts that may affect our local school district should, and the word is sequestration, but it means reductions, take place. And as a brief background, the sequestration or the reductions is a result of the supercommittee's failure to reach agreement on trimming $1.2 trillion from the federal government budget. In lieu of this, the Congress placed, or the Appropriations Committee in Congress placed triggers whereby reductions will be taking place in the domestic discretionary funds. And how does this affect us here in Sacramento? Well, there's a couple of things. First, an 8.2% reduction will be made across the board for the next 10 years. Again, 8.2% reduction will be made across the board for the next 10 years at the federal government level. And the programs that they've identified are the programs that receive advanced funding, programs like IDEA Part B, Title I, ESEA, school improvement programs, career technology and adult ed. They will all be subject to the 8.2% reduction. How is this being discussed at the halls of D.C.? Well, the reduction for advanced funding programs will take place, they say, primarily in 2013 and 14, with one big exception, which hears the big impact on us, the federal impact aid, which will be reduced in 2012, 13, by 8.2%. For our district, this means additional cuts on top of the cuts that we may have to take should propositions 30 or 38 do not pass. So we'll have a double whammy there. What can you do, or you and the collective we do, about this? Well, one of the big asks that they're asking for us to do is to contact our congressional leaders across the nation and let them know what has been taking place in your school districts. The other thing is, most importantly, you need to get out there and vote November 6th and vote for the right people to get into this office, the ones that are concerned about education. In addition to this, I need you to contact our local congressional leader and let her know how devastating the current budget cuts are and have been for Sacramento City Unified School District, and how horrific additional cuts will be should the sequestration take place. There's a recommendation that we asked for in education funding hearing at the congressional level, and I just want to express to you all that now, more than ever, is the time for our voice to be heard, is now is the time for us to take action, and now is the time for us to make a difference. As part is my action of making a difference and being proactive, at this time, I'd like to ask our superintendent to help our board be more proactive. I'd like for him to bring back a report in the appropriate level of closed session with the following details. So I'd like to see the actual amount of an 8.2 reduction of the federal impact aid for that and what that translates for our district, the programs and services that will be impacted by this reduction, the personnel titles that are attached to these programs and services, and the schools who will be affected in order of greatest to least by this reduction. And I thank you, Superintendent, for doing that for us. That concludes the end of my report. Item 9.5, Student Member Katrina Yi is absent today, so we'll reserve hers for later. Yes, Member Kennedy.
Just again.
Oh, okay. So well, 9.6, I'm going to go with that. Information shared by board members and Member Kennedy.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to make the board aware of the fact that measures Q and R, the school bonds that are on the ballot in November, have been endorsed by both the Sacramento Metro Chamber of Commerce and Sacramento Region Builders, two of Sacramento's preeminent business groups, recognizing that good education, solid schools, successful students is also good business for the region.
Thank you for that great news. Any other board members? Well, I have a couple of things. I'd like to announce that just today, Woodbine Elementary School received computers and printers from Education Equity and Computers for Classrooms, and this was facilitated by former board member Roy Grimes. Also, I'd like to extend a great deal of appreciation and gratitude for our superintendent who helped Harkness Elementary realize their request of obtaining ESL, GED, and citizenship classes. Thank you very much, Superintendent, for your help on that. Parents were very, very, very happy. Back to School Night, they were excited and passing out information, so it was a good thing. Thank you very much. And it'll translate to be a good thing for students as well. And seeing no further members who wish to speak and share at this time, I'll move on to item 10.0, Strategic Plan and Other Initiatives. 10.1, SCUSD, SCTA, Retiree Health Investment and Trust Plan Agreement, Ms. Patricia Hagemeier. It is a conference item, 15-minute presentation and 15-minute discussion.
Thank you. Good evening, President Rodriguez, board members, and Superintendent Raymond. This evening, we have a conference agenda item establishing the SCTA/SCUSD Retiree Investment and Trust Plan Agreement. Here with me this evening are Dana Flattin, Brett Williams, Scott Smith, Manuel Villarreal, as well as John Swedenski from CalPRA. as well as John Swedenski from CalPERS. Maybe we can pull up another chair, and you guys, everybody can have a seat up here. At the end of the presentation, we'll all be available to respond to any questions that you might have. The overview of items presented this evening include a recap of the June 14, 2010 agreement with S C T A, the steps that were taken to create the trust plan, identification of the funds that will be used to fund the trust plan, an overview of the trust plan documents as presented in your board packet, and finally, next steps. The concept of the trust plan started with the June 14, 2010 agreement between the district and S C T A. Several sections of the agreement, which were included in your board packet, identified funding sources to apply towards S C T A's retiree unfunded liability. The accounting for this unfunded liability has been referred to as GASB-45. GASB, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, which we've discussed at previous board meetings, the total district's unfunded liability of $566 million, and we've known that this is a concern for the long-term well-being of our retirees. S C T A identified several cost-saving measures with the savings to be set aside in a trust to start funding the liability. A change was made to Health Net Prescription Copays. Prior to the agreement, there was a $5 copay for generic and brand-name prescriptions for a 30-day supply. After the agreement, the copay was increased to a $5 copay for generic prescriptions, $15 for brand name, and $35 for non-formulary brands for a 30-day supply, and those copays doubled for a mail-order 90-day supply. In addition, there was a change to the Health Net Out-of-Area Retiree Program that reduced costs by replacing the current program with an agreed-upon broker-recommended offering that was the same cost as the in-area retirees. Also, there was an opt-out program for retirees that provided reduced funding for retirees to purchase their own health insurance. S C T A active members contributed $15 per month for 2010-'11 and $20 per month for 2011-'12 as contributions to the trust. Included in the June 14 agreement was language to work together to create a trust to administer and fund the S C T A retiree health benefit liability. The first step was to agree upon a facilitator to help both parties work through the plan agreement. Tim Biddle was the representative from Siegel Company that was selected by mutual agreement to help with this process. A committee was identified. There were three active employees from S C T A, along with one retired S C T A member. Representing the district were three active staff members. While this seems like a lot of work to complete in just four meetings, they were very productive meetings, and there was email communication in between, so everyone was very well-informed of the process and the steps that needed to take place. At a meeting of the committee, a representative from CalPERS made a presentation of their plan, and the committee agreed to move forward with CalPERS. Other options were discussed, but it was very clear, particularly from every committee member, that no one had the time or expertise to try and invest these funds ourselves. All documents went through extensive legal review, both the S C T A legal counsel as well as our own, and the facilitator from Siegel Company also had a final review of the documents that are before you this evening. Here's a breakdown of the funds identified to start the trust. The Health Net Prescription Changes mentioned earlier saved almost $571,000 in 2010-'11 and almost $560,000 in 2011-'12, for a total of $1.13 million. The Health Net Out-of-Area Program saved almost $294,000 in 2010-'11 and jumped to $688,000 in 2011-'12. The reason for the large difference is that this wasn't started at the beginning of the year in 2010-'11, so that was just a partial year of savings. And then the opt-out retiree benefits change resulted in a total savings of about $68,000. Those two items saved a little over $1 million. In addition, active S C T A members contributed $15 a month for 2010-'11 for a total of $381,000. That amount increased per the agreement to $20 per month for 2011-'12, generating $488,000. The contributions for those two years total $869,000. The grand total that has been identified to invest in the trust is $3.05 million. The documents that were provided in your packet include the trust plan agreement. This document outlines the plan and identifies the trustees. It outlines the authority of the Board of Trustees of the plan. It also outlines general provisions, such as interpretation, limitations, and the appointments to the committee. Again, the trust plan agreement had extensive legal review. The next document is the agreement and election to prefund other post-employment benefits through CalPERS. This is CalPERS standard document. We didn't make any changes to what they provided, and this document does require board approval. Next was the certification of funding policy. This is also a CalPERS standard form. It does not need board approval, but because it identified the investment strategy that was outlined in the plan agreement, it's been included for your information. Additional information that is required to complete the form will be done prior to submission to CalPERS. The last document is the delegation of authority to request dispersments. This document is also a CalPERS standard form. It identifies the superintendent and one member of the Board of Trustees to request dispersments. This document does require board approval. Our next steps will be to bring back these documents for board approval at the October 18 board meeting on the consent agenda. The required CalPERS forms will be completed and submitted as outlined in the plan agreement, and we will also hold a meeting of the committee in October or early November. That does conclude the presentation, and we're happy to answer questions that you may have.
We have public comments, so we'll take public comment first.
We have one public comment on this item from Richard Markison.
Good evening, Board Members and Superintendent Raymond. I want to congratulate the board for taking some steps to address the board's, or the district's, unfunded liability for your retiree benefits. However, this seems to be a very modest first step. In 2008, which was the last calculation, I believe, that was performed on your unfunded obligation, you owed somewhere in the neighborhood of $556 million. I would note that you were obligated to complete that reassessment in 2011, or 2011, and as far as I know, that has not been completed. I understand it may be coming out probably after the election. Anyway, the point is, you're making a valiant first step, but you still have a substantial problem in front of you dealing with retiree health benefits, something that you will obviously be facing this board, future boards, probably the children of future boards. This is a very long-term problem that the district has on top of its other bonded obligations. Thank you.
Thank you. No further public comment. Any questions by board members? I just, I do have one more of a comment in direct relationship to a public commenter is, we have been talking about unfunded liability on this board since 2008, when I first got here, and I looked at the audit, and that's something that I have been watching year to year, and I haven't seen significant growth to, to be alarmed that we're going and we're getting out of control on this. And I believe that the board has taken other measures in which to address the unfunded liability, and this is one of them that we're taking definitely to lower the growth of that. So Ms. Hagemeier, I know that we've had other measures that we've done. Off the top of your head, can you just say a couple of the other things that we've been doing as a board?
Well, certainly, any changes that we make to any of the retiree programs, primarily through negotiations, has helped with our unfunded liability. Just, I would like to point out, the last time the valuation came before the board was last year, and it was as of December 1, 2010, and it was $566 million. We have appeared to have stopped the rapid growth of it, just again through a variety of measures that have taken place. This is a great first step for S C T A to move forward with this and to have these funds set aside to protect their retirees. It's a, it's a very good thing for the district.
And I'd like to thank the partners that were involved in this, and it's not an easy task, and it's something that I think, and I've been enough, I've been involved in national conversations about retiree benefits and unfunded liability, and I must say Sacramento City Unified is doing the right thing, and we are in the right direction. So I'm very proud of everyone to come together and that we're moving in that right direction. Other cities, counties, other government entities across the nation are really having a big problem with this, and I think that the collaborative nature that we have here really is going to shine through, so thank you. And I don't have any other comments.
I would like to, we do have several of the board members here. Catherine Gaffey Lehman was also a member of the committee and was not able to be here tonight, but a big thank you to her and a big thank you to all the committee members that gave up their time. It was very much appreciated, and everybody worked really hard, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming today. We have item 11.0, Business and Financial Information Reports. We are receiving information on 11.1, Business and Financial Reports for Purchase Orders, Reports on Contracts and Developer Fees Report. On 11.2, LEA Plan End-of-Year Report, we do have a public comment. Mr. Gabe Ross.
Darlene Anderson.
Let them point to the LEA's plan and the gains. I kind of feel, this Darlene Anderson, of course, I haven't been here for a minute, so hello, how are you all? Hope you're doing well. But my concern is the way the district communicates with their families and program improvement and the PI status of year three. Most people don't even come out because they don't understand the necessity for parents to participate in the public education system. But Sacramento has a real problem, especially looking at their African-American families because citywide, Sacramento citywide, African-Americans have the highest infant death mortality rate, they have the highest dropout rate, they have the highest incarceration rate, and that all comes from a lack of education or a lack of engagement in education. And I see a great problem with hiring practices in this district, where people feel that they can do the job, and they've done a great job over the years, yet they cannot communicate with the families that they're working with. Other words, they can't engage them. And I believe that there are tools nationwide to promote more equity in employment and hiring and ensuring that you get people who can make a difference besides the entitled class of people who have been working in this district for a long time. But when it affects a community as bad as it has this one, it's an awful thing because it says that certain people are not entitled to a free and appropriate education, and it really demonstrates that in all of the data that you have. This one that was put together did not demonstrate the success or failure of the district, and I think that, you know, the state of California has the PI status data for this district, and you could have used data straight across the board. Thank you.
As the agenda shows, we are just receiving that information. Item 12.0, Future Board Meeting Dates and Locations, October 18, 4:30 closed session, 6:30 open session, and November 1, 4:30 closed session, 6:30 open session. That brings us to adjournment, item 13, and I will take a motion to adjourn. Vice President Cunha motions, and followed by support with Vice President Wu. All in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Hosts and abstentions, and we are now adjourned. Thank you.